Good evening and welcome to the Maple Plains City Council Meeting. It is Monday, February 26th at 7:00 PM and I call the meeting to order. Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we adopt tonight's agenda, I'd like to take a moment of silence tonight. As we meet, there is a night of prayer and healing in the city of Burnsville from 6:30 to 9:30 PM where they will remember and honor Officer Paul Elmstrad, Officer Matthew Ruge, and firefighter Adam Finseth. We think of those three heroes who gave their life, who planned to go home that morning and weren't able to. And we are grateful for their service and for their commitment. We also think of Sergeant Adam Eldicott and all the others who were involved and for those who continue to put on the uniform every day, both fire and police, to protect and serve us. And we ask that every day that all of our officers and first responders would be able to make it home to their loved ones and thank them for their commitment. Before we adopt tonight's agenda, we do have a couple changes. First, we will be removing Letter G, Update to Budget and Fiscal Management Policy. We are not ready to do that tonight. And then we will also be removing, under New Business, Letter B, Approval of the 2024 Water Sewer Storm Sewer Rates and Budgets. We are not ready for that at this time. And then I'd like to add, Letter C, Under New Business, Software and Technology Purchases Up to $25,000. With those three changes, I'm looking for a motion to adopt this evening's agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Francis.
I'll second that.
Second by Fay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Tonight, we get to do something very celebratory. We are grateful for the partnerships that we have with our businesses and we are especially grateful for McGarry's Pub. And James, the owner who is with us tonight, James hosted and McGarry's hosted the Second Annual Golf Classic Charity Fundraiser. And James, I don't know if you'd like to speak or not, but you're welcome to. And James, this year the fundraiser went to West Hennepin Public Safety and the Maple Plains Fire Department. So again, just a great partnership and another opportunity to honor those first responders. So would you like to say anything?
Sure.
Okay, perfect.
I just want to say I appreciate everything our first responders do. This is our second year doing this charity. It means a lot for us and McGarry's Pub to be able to be involved in the community and help give back to people that give so much of their time and their effort. So I really appreciate everything and this is kind of Gary's Pub and our way of giving back to our community as well.
Awesome. And then at this time, I'd like to recognize and call forward West Hennepin Public Safety Director Gary Krails, Deputy Chief Ed McGinty, and Independence Council Member Ray McCoy. And I don't know if Chiefs, if you guys want to say anything or not?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank McGarry's and the community and all the people that attended that day. It was a great event and a great time playing golf with everybody and thank you for the donation towards our organization and it will go to great use. So thank you, James.
Of course.
Echo the same thing Gary Krails just said, but also just with everything going on in Burnsville, it just really shows that your community is who supports you through thick and thin. So we really appreciate it.
Yes, on behalf of the City of Independence, I want to say thank you for being involved with our community, supporting our first responders, our police and fire. I happen to have the privilege of being fire chief when that fundraiser was held last summer when it was warm and it is now. It just was such a cool deal to be out there and be part of it and see the many, many, many people involved. And I got to visit and connect with a lot of people that day. And so again, on behalf of the City of Independence, I say thank you and appreciate your involvement with people that give so much every day.
Thank you. We're going to pause and take a brief picture while the checks are being presented. Well, thank you so much, everyone, for coming for that. It's always nice to get together for something happy and to show appreciation. It's just another reason it's such a great community that we get to be a part of. So, all right. Are there any visitors to be heard this evening? All right, seeing none, we will move on to the consent agenda. With that, I'm looking for a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda, which includes January 22nd City Council Business Meeting Minutes, January 22nd City Council Public Hearing Meeting Minutes, January 22nd City Council Workshop Minutes, January 29th City Council Special Meeting Minutes, February 12th City Council Workshop Meeting Minutes, Resolution 24-0226-1, Appointing Election Judges for 2024.
I'll make that motion.
Will we approve the consent agenda?
Second.
We have a motion by DeLuca and a second by Fay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Consent agenda is approved, five to zero. All right, next we'll move on to accounts payable. We have four different bills to be, batches of bills, excuse me, to be approved this evening. We will begin with the city bills for 2023, $14,113.22. Looking for a motion to approve that.
So moved.
Moved by DeLuca.
Second.
Second by Francis. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor of approving, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Approved, five to zero. Next is our city bills for 2024, which is $245,957.14. Looking for a motion to approve that.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, you may.
Jacob, People Service, for example, and City of Independence Dental Insurance, are we going to get into the habit of paying in advance? We've got replicated February and March on the bills. We're paying February and March for People Service and we're paying February and March for Dental Insurance?
That's a good question. Let me look into it and get back to you.
Thank you.
Are you still comfortable with both months being paid now as long as we look into it?
Yeah, I mean, it's a... Yes?
We do not have a motion or a second yet. We did questions. Any other questions regarding city bills for 2024? Okay, hearing none, then looking for a motion to approve those.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Councilmember Fay.
I'll second that motion.
Second by Councilmember Birak. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, we're going to do the fire bills. Let's do these in... We can do them both in one motion. So...
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
If I may, there's one correction to the fire bills 2024. We had an amount listed at $54,342.74.
Okay.
It is actually $72,196. After we did the packet, there was invoices that I had missed approving, so they didn't pay them, which is good. One was for beverages for the fire department, $628.39. The other was $17,438.70 and that was for the Lucas machine that the fire department just got. So that's what makes up that new total of $72,196.54.
Any questions regarding the fire bills for '23 or '24? All right, hearing none, I'm looking for a motion to approve paying the fire bills for 2023, $7,500, and 2024, $72,196.54.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Francis.
I'll second the motion.
Second by Birak. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Next, we will move on to staff reports. All of those have been submitted before us from our city planner, West Hennepin Public Safety, our city engineer, Public Works, Fire Department, and Administration and Finance. Does anyone have any questions for our planner? Okay, then we will turn it over to our administrator for Administration and Finance update, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. As you can see, the ash trees have been almost all taken down. Public Works is still working on some that they can do themselves. We have more that we'll have to have for contracted services, but we'll look at that when we do the 2025 budgeting. They don't need to be taken down right now. Finances, as you guys learned from the workshop, the 2023 audit is now complete. I do have in here some proposed rate increases for water, sewer, and stormwater, but we did not come to a conclusion on that. Need to do some more work on what that's going to look like. So I'm not going to mention those at this time. Fire District Discussion is still continuing. Mark Kaltis, myself, and Scott Johnson from Adina met and we're putting together some different ways that that taxing jurisdiction can look like. So we'll have more information once we have that somewhat completed. We are aware that there are some links on the website that are not working. I have been trying to work with our vendor for the last 42 days on getting that fixed and I'm running into issues. So we are aware and we apologize for that inconvenience. Direct balloting has started for the presidential primary during normal business hours. However, we will be available this Saturday, March 2nd, from 9:00 AM to 3:00, if anybody wishes to come down to the office to vote. Polls will be open March 5th from 7:00 to 8:00 here in the council chambers. You can find more information on the website if you want for that. Also attached Revenue Expenditure Reports. Note that the cash balances are not 100% accurate because they did not put in those audit numbers for the month of January. So the month of February will reflect the correct numbers. I will stand for any questions.
When you say cash balances, you're talking fund cash balances?
Correct.
But the journal entries as far as revenues and expenditures are current as of January 31st?
That is correct.
Any other questions for our administrator? I'm looking for a motion to receive our staff reports this evening from our planner, West Hennepin Public Safety, our engineer, Public Works, Fire Department, and Administration and Finance.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Birak.
Second.
Second by DeLuca. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. We will move on to New Business this evening. We will begin with the variance in site plan approval for the Nutradine.
Yes, thank you, Honorable Mayor, council members. Tonight I present to you an application that went before the Planning Commission at their last regularly scheduled meeting. And it's a request by Nutradine Midwest for a site plan review and variance to allow an expansion of the existing building on the property located at 5410, 5414, Highway 12. There's a couple of addresses if you search for that property due to the multiple businesses that have historically been there. Dave Peterson and Nutradine Midwest Inc. are requesting that the city consider allowing an expansion of the existing building to accommodate new warehouse space that they would like to bring to this site such that they could locate 100% of their business activities within this particular facility rather than having some of their businesses currently take place off-site or outside of this facility. So this property is located on the north side of Highway 12. It's just across from Spring Avenue, even though Spring doesn't go all the way through, just for a landmark. And the property has an existing commercial building and parking lot. It's currently zoned mixed-use Bud Avenue by the city and it's guided by the city's comprehensive plan as mixed-use. The site is approximately 2.4 acres in overall size. So the applicant and their representative had approached the city quite a while ago, almost a year, I think now, about the possibility of expanding the building and talked through what the requirements were, what the limitations of that site were and just generally what types of requirements the city would have if they were to expand. They played around with several alternative designs trying to accommodate an expansion of the building meeting the various setbacks. And one of the things that was noted early on is that there is a 50-foot setback from Highway 12, which is a setback that we've had, I believe, for quite some time now in the city's ordinance. And really, that setback, I think, was a corridor setback with the idea that at some point there would be some sort of kind of a unifying effect of the Highway 12 corridor. But it's noted in the city's ordinance that there are existing sites that are going to have issues meeting the full 50-foot setback and/or being able to accommodate the 50-foot setback does place limitations on properties. With that said, they looked at a bunch of concepts and ultimately came back and said, as relates to the ability for them to utilize the property and construct an addition that would be most efficient, it would be advantageous for them to seek a variance to allow the expansion of the building. And so you can see on the aerial photograph, there's an existing parking lot that's located on the south side of the site up against Highway 12. Then there's essentially office space that's located in the front side of the building. That's the southern portion. And then you can see there's a loading dock and then warehouse, which would be on the northern portion of that building. Before we even went too far into it, we noted that there are wetlands near or around that particular property and we asked that they complete a wetland delineation to verify that there wouldn't be any impacts. They did do that. The delineation that was provided, and you can see it in the report, showed that there was an incidental wetland that was caused by drainage on Highway 12 on the southwest corner of the site and that wetland can be filled or manipulated. So with that, they came back with a plan ultimately to submit for consideration of approximately 8,100 square foot addition on the southwest corner of the existing building. And they were trying to locate that addition so that it worked not only externally but also internally with the spaces that they had inside of the building. And then also did not impact or take away the existing truck loading dock that's located in the northwest corner of the building. So with that, you can see from this diagram in the proposal that came back, they would be seeking approximately 11.62-foot setback or almost 12-foot setback variance. So they'd like to encroach into that 50-foot setback rather than cutting off the corner of the building, approximately 12 feet on that very southwest corner. And so you can kind of see, the triangle in blue is the area that would require the city to grant the variance. And then the purple dash line or the pink dash line is the current 50-foot setback from Highway 12. It was also noted at the Planning Commission meeting, if you follow that Highway 12 line, you can see that there's actually a jog in Minna's Right-Away, kind of right at that point, that contributes to the necessity or requiring them to come in and seek the variance for that project. So staff did a full review of the plans, both architectural and site plans. I'll go through just kind of some of the high-level points that the Planning Commission made and then I'll be happy to answer any questions. During the Planning Commission meeting, we presented the application and Planning Commission went through all of the various aspects of the plan. And there were a couple recommendations that came out of the site plan review and the variance request. Planning Commission thought that the variance request was warranted given that the 50-foot setback is a very large setback and does take up quite a bit of the property. With that said, Planning Commissioners had recommended to the city a couple of things relating to the architectural of the building and then to the landscape of the building. So I'm just going to show the elevations of the building here. The main elevation of the building is going to get a full overhaul. And so they're going to paint and then add a new entrance. And ultimately, their plan is to add signage. And the primary elevation that we're looking at is this elevation here, is that kind of primary face that would face Highway 12. And so you can see they're utilizing new paint, new colors, trying to unify that building and kind of modernize it. And then they're going to be bringing a new entrance feature to kind of the front door to highlight where that access would be. And then as you go to the... As you go around to the south elevation of the warehouse, that's then this upper right-hand corner here. And you can see that they're using a IFIS kind of stucco-like material on that new elevation as well as some new glazing or windows. And Planning Commission noted that they were proposing two bands on that elevation, the gray or darker bands that kind of now carry out the rest of the architecture. And Planning Commission had recommended that they then carry those bands to the south elevation, which would also have... I'm sorry, the west elevation, which would also have visibility from Highway 12. And so the applicant did carry the two bands, as you can see. These are the revised drawings, all the way around now so that the south elevation and the west elevation will be consistent. And then in addition, on the architectural side, the Planning Commission recommended that the applicant add a additional window or some additional glazing, which would be this window right here to that south... I'm sorry, west elevation, that kind of corner, which you would get a glimpse of as you're driving eastbound on Highway 12. So the applicant did make the changes that were recommended. And then I'll note on the site plan as well, so the applicant provided a revised site plan. And on that, on the landscaping, there was a couple of things that were noted. One, we're taking down as a part of this a couple of large silver maples in the front of that building. And the Planning Commission recommended that a larger deciduous tree be planted back in front of that building. So the applicant has now accommodated that by bringing back in a maple in that particular location, although this is a much higher quality maple, long-term. And then the second piece was the Planning Commission recommended that the applicant provide some evergreen screening along this portion of the drive aisle, again noting that there is going to be visibility into that loading dock area from Highway 12. And they wanted to ensure that there was some additional screening. The applicant made that change. And then the last thing I'll note in the Planning Commission's discussion and recommendation, it was noted, and staff had noted this as well, that the plans had shown a larger tree removal area as a part of the overall proposed removals that would be occurring. And Planning Commission recommended that they pull that back only to that, to the area that's really necessary. And it looked like there was probably just some discrepancy in the civil plans. But the applicant revised the plans to now show that hatched area as being really the only tree removal area that's going to be required as a part of the proposed addition. And so with that, with those changes, the Planning Commission found that the criteria for granting a variance had been met. They felt that the 12-foot variance was a reasonable request given the kind of severity of the 50-foot setback. They also noted the jog in the right-away line was also a factor in causing for some of that site to have limited or less usability. And Planning Commission recommended approval of the site plan review and variance with those conditions. The only other thing I'll note, and the applicants are here tonight, is there was a discussion at the Planning Commission relating to just the necessity for this. And the applicant noted they've been in the city of Maple Plain for nearly 50 years in that site and they are wanting to bring all of their operations into that building and then they really want to improve the appearance of that facility. They noted right now that they have historically leased a portion of that building to other businesses. Those leases are not being extended and so they are kind of taking over the entirety of that building for just this business. And they would move some additional warehousing operations that they're currently leasing space for off-site back into this. So this would allow them to be within one facility. I can go into as much detail or as little detail as you'd like. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff or the applicants? Councilmember DeLuca.
Mark, practical difficulty. How do we answer the... What is the practical difficulty of not complying with the code?
Yeah, so the practical difficulty that we found is that they're keeping... They're using the property in a way or in a manner that is permitted by the ordinance. It's consistent with our comp plan and our zoning ordinance for that matter. The location of the proposed addition is in line generally with kind of similar commercial facilities. And the 50-foot setback that we imposed on that property and it was imposed after the property owner owned that property is a significant setback and does take up or compromise quite a bit of the property. We built into our ordinance, I mean, into our ordinance when we noted in the mixed-use district that the council can find that the 50-foot setback is too onerous for a particular property and grant an exception. And we added language specifically to that regard. And so in a way, we built ourselves the hardship. We built a hardship into the language in the ordinance without really needing to then go further into trying to explain that or warrant it.
Okay, thank you. Is the applicant also aware that they'd have to come back for a sign ordinance?
They do. If they... They can come in with a signed permit. If it's fully, if it meets all standards, then they could, we could issue that permit.
They have to come back to you before doing something with their sign?
Correct, yeah, yeah.
Any other questions for staff or the applicant? With that then, I am looking for a motion to approve the variance in site plan approval for Nutradine and its Resolution Number 24-0226-2.
So moved.
Moved by DeLuca.
I'll second.
Second by Birak. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. Appreciate it.
Thanks for being here.
Thanks.
Next, we will move on to New Business. This was added to our agenda. Uh, next, we will move on to new business. Uh, this was added to our agenda. It is the software and technology purchases, up to $25,000. Um, this would include TVs for here in the council chambers and for our workspace, and some other things to work with Banyan and Laserfuge, and I don't know, I'll turn it over to our administrator if you wanna add anything else to that.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Uh, so just kinda recap on this, tech, the software upgrades of about, uh, $15,000, um, and then we're gonna get, uh, television screens for the council chamber, two of them, one for our co- conference room, so requesting to spend up to $25,000 of our, our funds that we received, uh, during COVID. I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions for staff regarding the software and technology purchase updates? Hearing none, looking for a motion to approve those purchase updates?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Councilmember Fay.
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Birak. Any further, uh, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Next, we'll move on to council reports and other business. Would you like to start?
No, you guys go first.
You sure? Okay, all right, best for last?
Best for last.
All right, we'll start with Councilmember Birak.
Well, um, in light of some of the other months, this is definitely lighter month for our activities. Was part of the joint council meeting for the swearing-in of the new officer, or completed probation officer, Nick. That's basically all I have right now.
Thank you, Councilmember Birak. Councilmember DeLuca?
During the month, we had workshop, a personnel meeting where we've been working on the, uh, the Personnel Manual and doing audits of our various payroll systems. And we had a fire relief meeting this month. There was discussion about, um, recommending an increase in the pension. If you remember, every spring we do that. A recommendation is going unanimously to the membership to increase the pensions by $150. That will still maintain us in the approximate hundred percent, uh, funding ratio that we always try to target. That will be going to the membership meeting on the 8th and then coming back to us, um, in March. We also have, uh, a celebration. Nate Scott is retiring, so we discussed a little bit about that. There will be a celebration, um, uh, coming up this spring for him. So, a lot of change in the fire.
Thank you, Councilmember DeLuca. Councilmember Fay?
Well, um, I agree. A little late, but, uh, I continue to, uh, attend, uh, Orno Rotary on Thursday mornings, uh, as well as my capacity as its treasurer. Councilmember DeLuca will join us this Thursday, where I think he's going to share some highlights of, uh, his Rotary Club's, uh, recent service projects out of the country. I have a Rotary Exec meeting Thursday afternoon. Tended the, uh, Future Fire District meeting earlier this month, uh, where we discussed potential options for creating a district. Not only, uh, how to support it, but how to potentially fund it through a, um, uh, a special taxing district and how that would work. Staff continues to work on those ahead of the next scheduled meeting, uh, first week of, uh, March. I also attended the, uh, Joint Indy Maple Plain Meeting where we swore in Officer Nick Eldred, um, to the WHIPS, and a pair of workshops, and tonight's business meeting.
All right, um, in addition to the workshop and our business meeting, I attended Planning Commission, where we heard from Nutri- NutriDine and their plans, and, um, that got approved. The Planning Commission was very thorough in their review. It was, it was a good meeting. Attended fire relief and the joint meeting of the badge pinning. First time I witnessed that, and I was very impressed. I think everyone should get a chance to witness one of those. So, and I received a comment from a resident, um, thanking WHIPS for saving their lives in a car accident that happened on Saturday out towards the bypass, and they just couldn't stop gushing over how wonderful our officers are, and I share that same sentiment. I spoke with Director Krails, told him his guys are amazing, and thanked him for saving their lives. So, and that's about it.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Francis. Yes, I as well attended many of the meetings with my colleagues up here, so that's been good. I, in addition to that, I had a meeting with Senator Morrison, who wanted to just meet and talk about priorities for Maple Plain and see if she can be a resource to us. I was, also hosted, uh, Cub Scout Den here and was able to speak to them and answer their questions, and had a little mini council meeting, so really enjoyed that and wrote a book on government, and they thought it was great, and we might have set off the alarm in the building, but everyone is safe, so that's all good. That's what happens when you meet on a federal holiday. Police Commission, in addition to our meeting, um, I have the honor of sitting in on interviews for police officers and have been doing those periodically. Mayor Johnson and I, along with, um, the two sergeants, do those interviews, and, um, we have another one coming up this week, and have had two other ones. Uh, the West Hennepin Chamber, we've been, um, busy and working on our budget for that. Able to attend the Orno Coalition, uh, Minnesota Women in City Government, the Elected Leaders Institute, um, which was a two-day training session, uh, was very powerful, very well done. The League does a great job. We talked about the Art of Negotiations, Inversity 101, and Crisis Ready Leadership. Was able to attend Regional Council of Mayors, where we talked about changing climates and why it matters and resources for cities. Last week at Northwest Hennepin League and Municipalities, Ryan Wilson from MinDOT spoke, so that was good to get updates on, um, all the different things going on and directly in our communities. Had Criminal Justice Coordinating Committee, um, meeting last week as well, down at the Government Center, and then continued to meet weekly with our administrator. Uh, we had our Donald Senior Center Advisory Board meeting for February. I have one more month left for my three-year term, um, and that will be ending in March, and I am very grateful we had two Maple Plain residents step forward, willing to serve on that board, and for the next three years, it will be Jeff Brown. So thankful for him and his willingness to do that and to make sure that we continue that partnership with the Senior Center, um, which is invaluable since we don't have one in our community. So there's been lots going on. I know Citizens Academy is full, so they're thrilled about that, and in April they'll have graduation for that. Um, and I know we have something else that we should've done at the beginning of the meeting, Mr. Administrator.
I'm gonna save the best for last.
Okay, good.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. It is my privilege and honor to introduce Kevin Larson, our new Assistant City Administrator. He started with us part-time on February 8th, and his first full-time day will be April 1st, so I would like to officially welcome him to the Maple Plain team.
Right, welcome, Mr. Larson. All right, you're good?
Thank you.
All right, with that, having no other business come before us this evening, I am looking for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Birak.
Second.
Second by Francis. All in favor of adjourning signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Meeting's adjourned at 7:40.